Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, member Johnston is missing. Approval of the agenda, you all have the agenda in front, is there any changes or?
No.
Counsel?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave, second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, May 3rd, 2017, and the special meeting, April 17th, 2017. Is there any changes, corrections, or clarification for those two meetings? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of both May 3rd and April 17th meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Now is our public open forum, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council? Calling a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one, our public open forum is now closed, we have no public hearings, then brings us to our reports and presentations. 2016 audited financial statements report, Mary from Clifton, Larson, Allen.
Thank you for having me tonight. In front of you, I said the audited financial statements, it's in the bigger bound document. I don't want to put you to sleep and I don't want to keep you here all night, so I won't read those. I have the PowerPoint presented and prepared, and everything within the PowerPoint actually ticks and ties back into the financial statements, so feel free at any time, you can tick and tie those numbers in. I will go through the PowerPoint, starting on page seven, so I met with a finance committee ahead of time and we did all our communications that way, so just gets to the meat of the presentation. As I present this, if any questions come up, feel free to stop me and just ask, sometimes it's easier just to ask while it's on your mind than to try and wait. So, we'll start with page seven, the city's audit results, an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, so that's our highest level of assurance to be expected by the city council. There were two material weaknesses, one controls over financial reporting, so we go ahead and prepare the bound document in front of the council tonight, more of a disclosure piece. Segregation of duties, just like to remind you that upstairs, there's not enough finance department employees to separate out all of those duties, so as the council gets financial information, just be aware of that and look at that and review that and ask questions. Minnesotaal compliance, we test seven areas, we did have one finding related to contracts, and that's responsible contractor requirement, so there's a wording that is supposed to be included in contracts, we tested, some had them, some did not, Vicki is working on that and should be cleared up. So page eight, we'll get into the financial results, these are the cash and investment balances, number one, down at the bottom left, is your general fund, number two is going to be all of your other governmental funds. So if you look at the general fund, you actually had a slight increase in cash and investment balance. Governmental funds, don't get too worried, the large decrease is the bond payment that went out, so you had money sitting in escrow to go ahead and make those refunded payments, so that took place in 2016. Page nine, the fund balances, so again, general fund is here left, increased slightly from last year, and then your other governmental funds will decrease as well due to the payout of the bonds. So within the general fund, you actually have about four and a half months of expenditures in unassigned fund balance, the state auditor recommends about five months, so if we take a look at what you have in the general fund, you actually have about 450 assigned fund balance, which could be used to help operations if needed. So budgeted for the general fund was, budgeted a loss of about 46,000, and actually it came in at a positive 61,000, so the general fund did do well this year, above expected. So page 10, these are all the governmental revenues coming in, and you can see them by item, and going back from 2012 up to 2016, so fairly similar over the categories, so license and permits went up due to electric revenue coming in there from the utilities, and then your charges for services decreased, the hospital payments related to the ECPN payment actually went away. Now Vicki says it's coming back, but we'll see what that does next year. So page 11 then, it shows a pie chart of those revenues, and what percentage comes in at what category. You can see intergovernmental revenues and property taxes are between 24 and 25 percent So fairly common to see this pie chart, sometimes we'll actually see intergovernmental revenues at higher, then you have other areas where actually property taxes are more significant, just depending on your location and what you get for funding. And the decrease in revenues, again, related to the hospital revenues, there were no other significant decreases in revenues. So page 12, then where do the expenditures go out? So these have each of the categories from 2012 to 2016. Public safety is where that ECPN charge was put, so you would expect that to decrease. Economic development actually increased pretty significantly compared to last year, one was related to the cleanup of the racetrack, and then the second one was cleanup of some loans within TIF 1. Then capital outlay is going to vary from year to year depending on what projects the city has going on. So page 13 then gives you a pie chart of those, fairly consistent from last year, again, expenditures would go down due to the ECPN charge being gone. Page 14, audited financial statements, and a state auditor, reporting form is required to be reported to the state, that will be done either this week or next week, so we should meet the deadline. The 2007A and 8A bonds were paid off, that's what I talked about, the escrow being paid, used to pay those off. The hospital special revenue fund received just over 356,000 of actual income, about 265,000 of that was interest, and then 142,000 was some makeup payments for the ECPN. And then right now, they're still working capital loan, about 6.7 million, and that's what they're actually paying interest off of. So page 15, then tax increment financing fund, so land is being held right now in there on the financial statement, it's about 1.4 million, so when that's sold, you'll actually see the revenue come back into that fund. General fund, we had talked about a slight increase in fund balance, about 61,000, 55,000 of that came from the sale of assets in 2016, and then the city actually transferred 150,000 to the Oak Street Capital Project Fund for that project. Capital Project Fund balance decreased, about 355,000, that was due to the completion of that Belt Line project, and then a few transfers to the debt service funds to help those payments. Debt service fund balance, we talked about, a 1.9 million dollar decrease, and that was just the cash going out, paying those bond payments, but you still have ending cash fund balance of about 2.4 million in debt service, that will be used to pay principal and interest payments in the future. So I like these presentations, no big surprises, as you receive monthly financial information, it's accurate, we don't come in and adjust the books by any means, so. Any other questions?
Questions, comments?
Okay.
Good.
Sharon Sweet?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, activity report for April 2017, some of the numbers we had, we had five alarm calls, three K-9 assists for other agencies, we did 30 personal assists for people, we did 34 business assists, we did 21 assists for other agencies, we did five bar crowd checks, we did 21 citizen contacts, we had 10 small amount of marijuana and drug paraphernalia citations given out, we had 13 juvenile problem calls, we had 18 medicals, we gave out citations for 11 people for no Minnesota driver's license, six accidents, 16 public nuisance calls, well not calls, that's junk ordinance we've been working on, cleaning up some of the yards in town, 14 school patrols, 17 suspicious calls, six thefts, we had six unwanted person calls, and 13 welfare checks, we gave out 346 verbal warnings, and we had 475 calls. So for total, or what was that, it was a total of 821. So compare that to March, we were up by calls of 56, we gave out 115 more warnings, so a total increase of 171. Compare that to 2016, we're up 123 on calls, gave out 44 more warnings, so total of 167. So pretty comparable. Any questions on those numbers?
Questions?
I noticed that we've got 11 of them for no valid driver's license at all, that's a lot, good job.
Yeah, a lot for that, and the driving after revocation and suspension too.
It's amazing.
A few of those, so.
Good job, chief, thank you.
Thank you. Also, you notice that the police department started its own Facebook page for the city, so if you visit that, which we got to get in social media also, I guess, so, see how that works out.
And I noticed last Friday night was a good, was a very busy night.
Very busy night again, yep, yep, Sonny and Sergeant Jensen did a nice job.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Planning Commission report, Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, in your packet you have a copy of our amended agenda, we had a meeting on May 9th, and there was just one public hearing, and it was to amend the conditional use permit for the Alliance Building Corporation, who was building the new apartment complex at 800 Main Street North, and that was about some parking requirements, and that will be before you later this evening for an action item. And then our building permits, with that apartment building, so the month of April, our total construction value was 3.6 million dollars, and compared to a year ago, it was like 112,000 dollars, so that building helps a lot. And the other thing that we have is our informational items, our scrap metal cleanup day was held on Saturday, and the weather cooperated, and they were very, very busy that day, which was good, it was kind of from 8 till 1 o'clock, people were there at 7:30, and the trucks, pickups were lined up in the parking lot almost all day long, dropping stuff off, so it was a good turnout. The household hazardous waste day will be held in June, we have GTS, Government Training Services, educational events that our planning commission members can sign up for, and our comprehensive plan, we looked over some samples of survey questions, and now we have the survey that I believe is ready to go out via email, I think it will be on our Facebook page, or our city, good, it's already on our Facebook page, or the city website, good. So people can take advantage of using that survey to help us compile some opinions and results for the comp plan that we're working on in this next year, and that is all I have.
Questions?
I actually took the survey, it doesn't take very long to finish it at all.
Good.
Maybe 10 minutes at the most, it's well worth it, thank you, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our action items, 7A, accept 2016 audited financial statement report.
This action is just to formally accept and approve the 2016 audited financial statements that Mary Reedy just presented to you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, okay, do I have a motion to approve and accept the 2016 audited financial statements?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve summer rec agreement with Independent School District 743.
Okay, Don Peschel and Pat Wesby from the Sock Center Public School District presented a proposal to the park board to extend the summer rec agreement previously in place with that district, the proposal will continue, would continue the agreement for an additional three years at the rate of $9,000, which is what we previously paid, after which it would be revisited. The park board, after visiting with them and discussing the proposal, they do recommend that the city council move forward with that agreement. So the request is to approve the agreement with ISD 743 authorizing a $9,000 per year contribution to the summer rec program for 2017, 18, and 19, and we did budget the 9,000 for this year.
All right. Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Independent School District 743 authorizing a $9,000 per year contribution to the summer rec program for 2017, 2018, and 2019?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Diane, second by Heidi, any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve resolution 2017-31 amending parking restrictions on Hickman Drive.
Prior to the construction of the splash pad, the park board recommended, and the city council approved, a parking restriction on the east side of Hickman Drive, which would be on the campground side, would be no parking from Park Road to Park Lane, it was thought there would be considerable on-street parking for the splash pad, and the decision to allow the on-street, on the splash pad side only, was to keep pedestrian traffic from having to cross the street. Since it's been open, we've noted the parking occurs on the campground side of the street, not necessarily on the splash pad, especially for the overnight camping, overnight parking, all occurs on that side. So we went back to the park board, and the park board reconsidered that restriction, and they want to put the no parking on the splash pad side, which would be the inside of the corner, that way, especially overnight, it doesn't restrict visibility as much there. So the park board is, did after considering that request, they're recommending to approve the resolution which amend the parking on Hickman Drive, so that would be no parking on the splash pad side from Park Lane to Park Road, but you could park on the campground side. So that is the recommendation of the park board to amend that prior decision, and so that is resolution 2017-31.
Questions?
Is that road not wide enough for parking on both sides?
Gets pretty restricted, it's quite restricted there.
All right.
Are the signs already here and purchased?
Desk mat?
Um, I don't know. The reason why I asked is if we went and approved it a year ago already, and now we're changing it, I would think the signs should have been here at least a year ago, so that's the reason why I asked, so.
That's something we'll have to verify.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-31 amending parking on Hickman Drive?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve resolution 2017-32 amending CUP Alliance Building Group.
And this is what Sarah had mentioned, on May 9th, the planning commission held a public hearing to consider the request of Alliance Building Group, they're also known as Sock Center Multi-Family LLC, for an amendment to their conditional use permit, which permitted the apartment complex, and the request was to clarify the parking stall. The CUP as written requires one additional stall for every three units, but the request is to clarify the language state, one additional stall for every three-bedroom unit, and so that's what it was, is that we had the language, because our language right now is two stalls for every unit, and then we wanted, and then we added a stall for every three, an extra stall for every three-bedroom unit, is what that was, but how the resolution was, was one extra stall for every three units instead of three-bedroom units. So the planning commission reviewed the proposal, and they are recommending its approval, that's resolution 2017-32, which amends and clarifies the parking requirements.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-32 amending the CUP for Alliance Building Group?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against.
And if you've been up that Main Street North, you'll see that they're going great guns on their construction, so it's underway.
Approve resolution 2017-33 offering property for sale.
This is a recommendation that comes from the EDA, now that the Quiet Title Action work is completed, for the property the city purchased and cleaned up on Railroad Avenue adjacent to the old railroad bed, which is now Wobegon Trail, the EDA reached out to those developers who had expressed an interest in developing the property for multifamily use, those conversations have concluded with none of the prospective developers proceeding with a proposal, so the EDA at its regular meeting on May 3rd voted to recommend the city offer the railroad property for sale on the open market, they recommend it be offered for $40,000, there will be development stipulation that it would be developed, like for a residential preferred multifamily use, and the developer, development must occur within two years or the property would revert back, it's kind of typical when the EDA or the city sells property for development, we don't want it to be sold for investment, we want it to be sold for development, and so that is what recommendation the EDA is bringing forward, it's resolution 2017-33 approving offering the property for sale on the open market.
Questions? Everyone knows where that property is located?
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2017-33 approving offering property for sale on the open market?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any last minute concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries four in favor, none against. Approve ordinance 772 amending city code golf carts.
The city council at its May 3rd meeting approved that the city move forward with consideration of an ordinance authorizing the use of golf carts on city streets, we do have an existing golf cart ordinance, but it's restricted to people with disabilities, so this kind of amends that ordinance. The other components include it be allowed on city streets and county roads that have a posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour or less, that it's specifically not allowed on Trunk Highway 71 except for crossing, or for crossing the dam, but also just for crossing the highway, not allowed on sidewalks, you must have a valid driver's license, you must have insurance, you must display a slow-moving vehicle symbol, have a rear-view mirror, cannot exceed the occupancy load, and you would have to obtain a permit from the city. So I did include for you a copy of the existing code with markup, so the things underlined would be removed, or would be new, and the things with the strike through would be the removals, and then I also included for you a copy of the final ordinance that it would, you know, that actually makes those actual changes. So what we are looking for is to approve ordinance 772 amending the city code authorizing golf carts to travel on city and county roadways.
Questions, concerns? I've got a couple. Cost of the permit, is that going to, we have to change our fee schedule?
Our fee schedule currently has a $10 permit fee, and so that still stands, we can amend that tonight, or else we can consider it when we do our fee schedule again at the beginning of the year.
Okay, one of the things is, is I think $10 for a three-year permit is pretty cheap.
I agree.
Our goal is to get them in here so that they understand the rules.
All right. Are we having to print, is the city going to have costs in printing up these permits?
Yep, the stickers, the stickers that you put on the golf cart, we have a quote from the Herald, and they showed us the design, it just says City of Sock Center Golf Cart Permit and a number, and then we put expiration date, and they're 75 cents apiece, so it'd be $1.50 for front and back.
Okay, so the $10 permit charge will cover the cost?
Correct.
All right.
And we're open to, we're open to a change, you know, a recommendation to a change, it's just that was already set in the fee schedule from before.
Okay. And also, what's going to be the fine if we pull somebody over and they don't have a permit? You know, there's got to be a penalty, I don't, I just don't want to see a rash of verbal warnings going out, and so everybody, the word gets out either, so.
This does have the wording for revocation of permit, is that a good enough slap on the wrist, or are you thinking monetary?
I think monetary, we should at least have something, because, yeah, maybe the first time they're going to get a warning to come in, the second time, we can revoke it, but that's probably not going to stop them, because we do have people that do the repeat.
Do we have something that covers that? I mean, it's the unauthorized use of city streets, is basically what it is.
Well, we have our typical administrative fine in our code, which is $100, and that kind of is a blanket one, that's a penalty that applies to city code rules and laws.
Well, I'm just thinking, people use a snowmobile where they're not supposed to, or a scooter where they're not supposed to, I mean, these are all already covered somewhere.
And they would all default to that unless we specifically said a different amount.
Yep.
Okay, as long as, you know, as long as it's covered, I just didn't notice that, and.
So you're saying a penalty for not coming in to get a permit, or a penalty for a violation of it?
Penalty for not coming in and getting a permit, you know, if you get caught.
When you're on the street without one.
Well, our city code requires you to have one, and if you get caught without one, you're in violation of the ordinance, the same as if you violated a piece of it, so it would be all the same.
Then the fine would be?
It could be still the administrative fine of $100.
$100, okay, so it'd be easier to come in and get a $10 permit than it would to get fined $100.
Yeah.
And our first goal is to make sure everybody's aware that we've done this, I mean, we've realized there's some people out there with golf carts that are already doing it, and we'll make sure to send them a copy so that they know to come in.
Right, and one of the things, you know, must have insurance, you know, you're looking at a three-year period, that's where the revocation of the permit would come in, I would think, basically, because you can come in, get your permit, show proof of insurance, and cancel the insurance six months down the line, and drive for another two and a half years, so, without having insurance, so that's where the revocation would come in.
Yeah, that's a similar situation for any motor vehicle.
Right, and it would be like a motor vehicle situation, but it would fall into our category on our police reports on driving without a license and everything else, we can see that go up. I hope not, but.
I hope not.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 772 amending the city code authorizing golf carts to travel on roadways?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Heidi, any other questions or concerns? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approve resolution 2017-34 setting public hearing for annexation consideration.
We have received a petition from Kathy Felling Trust for annexation into the city of Sock Center, this is for property at Felling Trailers at Butts Highway 94, would allow the, and then once they're in the city, it would allow utilization of city services, specifically city water and city sewer. According to Minnesota statute, we must hold a public hearing following 30 days' notice, submitted to the township of Sock Center, which I did submit that notice, and then we did deliver it by certified mail, and in order to do the most expedient timeline here, we would have to schedule the public hearing for June 21st, which is the closest meeting past 30 days, at which time we can receive public comment. at which time we can receive public comment, including those comments that may be submitted by the township board. And then we'll also have an ordinance at that time, that will include a proposal for reimbursement to the township of lost taxes. So, every year for like, a period of five years, we pay back to the township taxes they would have otherwise received, had it stayed in the township. So what we're looking for tonight is simply a resolution setting the public hearing to consider the request.
Okay, questions? That parcel basically is like an island, just totally-
It's completely surrounded by city, and it's a little township parcel right in the middle.
Right. Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-four, setting public hearing to consider requests for annexation for June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, at six-thirty P.M.?
I'll make, I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Approved resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-five, declaring property excess and advertising for sale.
Uh, the Public Works Department has on hand an older pavement roller that they wish to dispose of, in order to dispose of that, we do need to declare it as excess and authorize the advertisement. So we're looking for approval of resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-five, declaring the property as excess and advertising it for sale.
Do we have another?
We were able to get an old mind dot one, a larger one, so that kind of made this one obsolete.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen dash thirty-five, declaring property as excess and advertising for sale?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any other concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. We have no unfinished business. Um, new business, capital improvement project, two thousand eighteen dash oh-two.
As you know, we have the current capital project going on for two thousand eighteen, which is the Getty Street project, which is a smaller project. And then, in addition to that, the city and the public utility, we've been working to establish an updated capital improvement plan, that kind of is more expansive than the one we have right now, and to look at areas of critical need for a second, a possible second project. Uh, two projects have risen to the top of the list for different reasons. One being Second Street, which is the length of town from the Wobegon Trail all the way to the east, you know, where it goes into the wetland, and that also includes portions of Willow, and then maybe a couple pieces off of Walnut, um, Cedar, some of those streets. And the second area that we looked at was the hospital area project, which is uh, Fourth Street North, Fifth Street North, Country Club, that section of Main Street, Oak and Elm. So there's an area of infrastructure there that was put in in nineteen forty-eight, so in two thousand eighteen, it'll be seventy years old. Uh, that is the area of town where we tend to have the most water main breaks. So the public utility, in, in looking at these two projects, seemed to favor that hospital area project. And I had put in here, they're both, uh, similar in size and scope to the Twelfth Street, Getty Street. You recall, we did that project in two thousand twelve and thirteen, or the Fourth Street and Getty Street project that we did in two thousand twelve and thirteen, um, which is about an estimated three and a half million dollars. Um, the, uh, kind of the reasons that, as staff, that we were looking for at the hospital area was because they were installed in nineteen forty-eight with the most, uh, water mains. The road surface, the curb, the gutter is in poor shape. Uh, the road was at one time overlaid without milling it, so the pavements all broke off along the gutters. Uh, there is no stormwater management, it's basically non-existent. That whole area up there, and I think Keith told me, about seventy-four acres, all flows and it comes down Main Street. If you recall, that was our third area of concern when we did the stormwater utility. We could potentially, uh, have an addendum and, and include the north Main Street project from Country Club going north, along the golf course, if that project comes forward. And also, um, we could look at that intersection as well. Now, we, and then I asked Keith to provide me some numbers on a kind of what it would cost to do a formal feasibility study, so that you guys would know that before you made your decision. And I gave you that updated staff report, uh, tonight, because he did provide those numbers. And so, I'm gonna have him go over those numbers with you. And basically what it is, is kind of a, a broad brush estimate of what the project could cost overall, and then separately, what the feasibility report would cost. The feasibility report includes the survey, topographic survey, the preliminary design report, and the preliminary assessment report. And really, that's the information you need before you can decide whether to move forward with the project. So I don't know, Keith, if you have any additional information?
Not too much, you pretty much said most of it. So, um, I did break it into several different options, as Vicky had indicated. The other one that wasn't in there was Lake Shore Drive, I was asked for that piece, essentially go around the west and north side of the golf course, so that's in there as well, in the numbers that you have in front of you. I actually looked at feasibility report cost, looked at from an hourly basis, what I thought it would cost, as well as from a kind of ballpark. Usually, we, we look at a percentage of the project costs, and the two numbers were within a couple thousand dollars of each other. What you have in front of you is one and a quarter percent of the project cost, which is pretty typically kind of where we're at, so, um, those are how those numbers are, are derived. So that includes everything, the project cost, to be clear, is the total cost, that's construction and, and, uh, engineering, and costs of money, all admin fees, all those kinds of things are included in the total project cost. That's the amount that gets ultimately, well, potentially assessed, if it, if it is, you know, which part is assessed, but, uh, that's, those are the numbers that we'd use for those. Um, Main Street, we kind of talked about that a while back, and it makes some sense to consider that potentially, depending on what's happening up there, there's some activity, I guess, put it that way, and so, that's an option for the council to consider. So I guess I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Questions? Comments?
Where it says Main Street, north of Country Club, what, what part of Main Street would that-
So, all the way up to Lake Shore, so all the way to the, to the north end of it.
All the way up to the new apartment, all the way up to that intersection.
So, the, the base option is from Country Club South, essentially to seventy-one, where it kind of connects there. And the main, the other part is Main Street north of that, all the way up to Lake Shore.
Okay, I was just reading that as like, the Country Club property, not necessarily the County of Lake Shore.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Basically what they're looking for is direction on which, if we wanna go ahead with the feasibility study, and at which level we want to do this. Do we wanna just stay with the base option and cover, you know, the Fourth, Fifth, and Country Club north, and then Oak, Elm, and Main up to the Country Club, um, road? I take that that's just the base. And then if we wanna include-
Correct, that's correct.
-Main Street from Country Club Road up, that would be base option plus Main Street, or base option plus Lake Shore Drive, which is all the way around to the other-
And that one doesn't include Main Street, and then the last one includes-
And the last one includes everyone, so if we're basically from, uh, Fourth Street north all the way to the lake, everything would be totally reconstructed and brought up to date. One question is, um, are we thinking about increasing water mains in that, or?
Yeah, absolutely, there are a bunch of four-inch lines at the moment, and those are some of the ones that are breaking up through there, so those would be-
So they go to six?
We, we kind of talked about that that would be a future, in, in, when we were talking about the water main on Main Street, so this is now part of it, that we're discussing before us. Um, between Main Street and Lake Shore Drive, from a infrastructure perspective of the road itself, Main Street is in worse condition than, than Lake Shore Drive, from a priority standpoint.
The one thing I was wondering about is if we did, and this is only long-range thinking, if we did Lake Shore Drive, would that help us get a more defined property line as far as going around, because I know when they were doing surveys for that, for the old Country Club, the property lines jigged, jogged everywhere. As far, I'm wondering if we redid the road and put, if that would help us in the future?
No, they're, the, the Country, or the Country Club property now has all been surveyed, and those property lines have been officially established.
Okay.
So, the, those issues that we had with them jigging all over the place, that's all been taken care of.
Okay.
And basically, everything on our side of the line is ours, and on his side of the line is his. And so that piece has been taken care of already. So we would base it on that, and then as he comes in for a plat in the future, then there'd be like, a utility easement along the side of it, otherwise, the line is now the line.
Okay.
So.
How old are the utilities, do you know, underneath Lake Shore Drive?
Nineteen sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, so we're already talking fifty years. Okay.
But they are twenty years newer than
Right.
the other part.
Right. Yeah. But they will get older.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, it makes sense to me to do it all.
Yeah.
We got a construction crew up there, and there's a lot of construction going on up there now, and a lot planned.
Well, and one of the things is, and I relate to that, is we're gonna have, with the hospital, we're gonna have a lot of, you know, they're expanding all the time, we're gonna have extra, um, traffic. We got an apartment house going up there, there's gonna be extra traffic, and there, and the needs for water, sewer, and decent roads for that whole area is gonna change immensely. So, you know, and the feasibility cost is something that, when we do do it, we can recoup them costs in a bond, right?
Yeah, that becomes part of those project costs, so those numbers are included in that project cost that, that's before you. Um, stormwater-wise, I should have mentioned, we'd be looking at areas that we could, you know, there, there really is little storm sewer up there. There is, kind of north of the hospital, that area drains ultimately to the lake. Um, we may be able to take some of that area off, you know, to do some enhancements for the lake itself, depending on the whole stormwater plan that would be done there, so there are some areas that really drop off, like to the south of the hospital, there's really no way we're gonna be able to get all of the areas out of the lake, but there is potential for some of it to be able to be rerouted away from the lake, so that would be a benefit as well, from water quality perspective.
I'm actually, you know, thinking about doing the feasibility, my personal opinion is just to do the feasibility for the whole works.
Yep.
Because we can always back off on the scope of the project after we find out what the actual costs are.
Yep, yep, I agree.
So, um, any other discussion or questions? Do I have a motion to authorize the next steps by ordering proposal to conduct feasibility study for the hospital area project, being the base option plus Main Street and Lake Shore Drive?
I'll move.
I have a motion by Dave, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane, any other questions, concerns? Call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Pickup purchase, Public Works Department.
Uh, at the last Operations Committee, uh, meeting, the committee reviewed a proposal to replace, uh, the Public Works, one of the pickups, and at the meeting, they requested staff put together some estimates from both local vendors and the state bid, and those proposals will become for you, probably at the next meeting. Uh, he's getting them from the state bid, and from Welly, and from, uh, John Weesford. And we have twenty-five thousand in the street department budget, and five thousand dollars in the park department budget for two thousand seventeen. And so that's kind of where we're, we're shooting, but you'll have more information at the next meeting. Any questions on that?
Questions? I know we had removed the pickup from the two thousand sixteen budget, and we put the money in the sinking fund.
That was two thousand fifteen, actually.
Fifteen.
And then in two thousand sixteen, we budgeted to get money out of the sinking fund to pay for it. So, if you look in your budget, it'll show the twenty-five thousand dollar budget for seventeen. Yeah, you're right, sixteen, we took it out, back in seventeen.
Right.
And then, uh, but said we'll take the money out of the sinking fund to pay for it, so.
I was just wondering, are we down one pickup, or are we still using one that probably shouldn't be on the road?
Yeah, we're probably using a couple that are on their last legs. We just have, really, we just have the two ninety-sevens left that are, like, really down there. And then, after that, the oldest one is only fifteen years old. You know, once those two are gone, so.
Any questions? Okay. Cold storage building floor.
Um, this is another item that we have talked about, a budget. Um, it, it wasn't in the budget for this year, but the Operations Committee was looking at a proposal to put the concrete floor in, and we had some opportunities to maybe get the price down there, where it was a comfortable price. And so they requested that we put together some estimates. We'll also bring that back to you, perhaps with maybe a potential way to fund it, and, and see if we can get that project done. Uh, we did lose the storage at the transit garage, we had three stalls up there that we could store, and those items aren't storing anymore. And, uh, with the gravel floor, although it was a good money saver a few years ago when we built the building, it does have its downfalls. So you'll see those numbers at the next meeting, and you'll be able to decide if you wanna move forward with that.
Any questions? Comments? Okay. It'll now take us to our consent agenda. We have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of sixty thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. There was an adjustment made, so your numbers that you have will not, does not reflect what I'm reading here. Um, paid claims of two thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars ninety-two cents, total of sixty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents. April checks totaling three hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Um, also, every year by June thirtieth, liquor licenses are up for renewal. Following applicants have their appropriate paperwork completed, and the fee is paid. Listed below are the liquor licenses and the license number, do you want me to read all of them all?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Same thing, uh, by June thirtieth, on, on-off sale, three, two beer licenses are up for renewal, and to date, all applicants have the appropriate paperwork completed and the fee paid. Um, there's only two on there, that's Jitter's Java Cafe and Isaac's North Star. And by June thirtieth, the cigarette licenses are up for renewal, and to date, the following applicants have the appropriate paperwork completed and the fee paid for that. We have a request from the downtown bars, Mustang, Next Door Palace, Bar and Grill, and Corner Bar, and also Shanie's Tavern, for a temporary extension of premise permit, and road closure for a Sinclair Lewis Day's Street Dance on July fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. The road closure request is a one-block area from Main Street to Oak Street. The bar is planning to close the road at three P.M. for setup, and reopen at two A.M. following cleanup. The fenced area will be from the east side of Shanie's Tavern, previously the red carpet across, to Main Street Drug at the intersection of Oak Street. Street Dance road closure permit application will be sent to Jody Tesh at the county after council approval. We have a request from Erie Kellerman DBA Next Door Bar and Lounge LLC for temporary extension of premise permits for the Kenny Step and Bike Run on July sixteenth, in the back parking lot, from ten A.M. to ten P.M. Request from Erie Kellerman DBA Next Door Bar and Lounge for a temporary extension of premise permit for the eighth anniversary party with music on July twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, in the back parking lots of Next Door Bar Food Shelf and Antique Store, from three P.M. to three A.M. Whoa, is that a typo?
I think that's a typo.
I think that should be twelve A.M., or-
Twelve thirty.
Or twelve thirty, right?
Yeah.
Yes. And a request from Sunshine Shanie, DBA Shanie's Tavern, for a temporary extension of premise permit, from eleven A.M. to twelve thirty A.M. in the back parking lot on June third, two thousand seventeen, with an outdoor ban. Um, also have an assembly permit request from Father Greg Paffel and Deborah Holt for a Corpus Christi procession, to be held on June eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, at Our Lady of Angels. About two hundred people are expected to attend. The procession will be from Our Lady of Angels Church down Ash Street to Saint Paul's Church, and back down Birch Street. Any questions or concerns? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Dave, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any other questions? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four in favor, none against. Informational items, uh, two thousand seventeen Bridge Report.
And, uh, we did receive the bridge part, report from Stearns County, we do have one official bridge that is under our control, and that is the Hoboken Creek Bridge on Hickman Drive, and the bid, the bridge, the bridge did pass, so that's a good thing, but I did include for you a copy of the report, and it talks about different deficiencies over the years and what their reports have found, so...
I also noticed that they do their bridge report in January. At least, maybe that's when they did the print out, or the inspection, in January.
Yep.
To me, it's very hard to see structurally sound when there's snow and ice covering it, but...
Well, maybe not so much this year.
Yeah.
You know, I know that it did say that there is a dip in the road just before that, which I basically consider to be part of the bridge, but...
They may not.[1766.74]